For the commission meeting for the town of Waxaw. Please rise for opening ceremony while we give the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence to give ladies some praise.
This is why the United States is here. To help with the citizens, nation, and God. If you're just as.
This time I'd like to ask if there are any updates to the agenda?
Mayor, I have one addition to the agenda to request tonight to add item E three on the consent agenda. Authorization for town attorney to sign consent order, Town of Waxaw versus Scotty Allen Gordon and Lori Gordon Chapman.
Can I get a motion to adopt the amended agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. Okay, first item is the consent agenda, the newly amended consent agenda. All in favor of the adoption of the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'm sorry, the motion was to amend the consent agenda, it wasn't a motion to amend the agenda. So now you gotta amend the, I mean you got to approve the actual agenda as amended.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is now amended. Say that five times if you must. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Did I? Alright. Make sure our bases are covered. Okay, so tonight we're gonna start with a recognition. We have a couple of employees that are being recognized and we'll also have a new officer. So first up, planning and inspections department.
Good evening. Is this on? Here we go. Good evening, my name's Lisa Thompson. I'm the planning director for the town. I'm here tonight with Lauren. Lauren started with the town five years ago in permitting. A year ago she became a planning technician in the planning department. Just a few months ago, we were up here in front of you all recognizing her as a certified zoning official. I think at this point she knows the land development code better than I do. Not certain that she knows it as well as Madison at this point. Uh, she's a wonderful asset to our team and we're very happy and lucky to have her. She keeps us well fed and sugar it up during the day. So with that, we are happy to recognize her for five years with the town. Congratulations.
I just wanna thank everybody. Five years really did go by really fast and I'm really proud to work for the town of Waxaw and I look forward to continuing to serve the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next up, we would like to recognize, bring forward Dex Wilson to recognize our new police officer.
Good evening. Uh, so tonight I wanted to introduce Officer Tristan Turner, who's recently been sworn in at the Waxaw Police Department. Officer Tristan Turner comes to us from, uh, he started his career in Lancaster City. He was employed there from two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen. So he committed back then as a law enforcement officer and, uh, in two thousand seventeen, he decided to take another route. Where he went to work for a personal protection specialist for Ambassador John R. Bass in Kabul, Afghanistan. He stayed in Kabul, Afghanistan from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty. After that time, he came back to the United States and started his own business. So for the next six years, he ventured out into teaching handgun safety as well as shooting techniques, which he's very good at, I must say. Uh, after six years of being out of law enforcement, he decided it was time to come back, uh, to the career field he knew, knew and loved. In twenty twenty-three, Officer Turner graduated North Carolina Basic Law Enforcement Training where he was the president of his class, uh, as well as he received the award for Top Gun. Which Top Gun would mean you're the best shooter in the class. So, uh, goes back to his training and, uh, all the training he did for others, he showed he knew what to do. Uh, he has completed studies in homeland security and at the American Military University. Uh, he's dedicated to the safety of the community. He is passionate about people, building trust and applying law enforcement duties with fairness and balance. Five years ago, Tristan and his wife Laura and their two children moved to Waxaw and became members of the community. Uh, they attend Forest Hill Church and the, and both children are currently enrolled in schools in the town of Waxaw. Uh, his personal interests include daily physical fitness activities, as you can tell, uh, and participation in church Bible study groups. Officer Turner brings a great deal of experience to the town, its citizens, will be a great asset in addition to the Waxaw Police Department. So thank you for, uh, coming.
So I, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody in the room for the opportunity. Uh, myself, my wife and kids are very excited about working for the talent and looking forward to our, our future. I'll be in the back if you have any questions for me personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Tristan. Thank you. You have an impressive resume, so we're happy to have you on the force and certainly seem no worse for wear after fighting trailers.
This is my inspiration while I was speaking.
Nice. We're glad you're okay, though. Uh, next up, we have a Emily Learned. You're gonna talk a little bit about our wellness committee.
Good evening. I'm gonna have my wellness team members. I don't know if all of them are here tonight, but the ones that are here, who joined me up here, Barbie. Um, so I'll kinda give you a brief, kinda high level overview of our wellness program before I go into the award designation that we received. Um, our wellness program has only been around for a handful of years. Um, but it provides something for all aspects of well-being. That includes physical, mental, emotional, social, financial well-being. Um, we currently have a wellness committee, uh, comprised of myself, uh, and four other members. So Barbie Bruce, Matt Falkenberry, Blair Israel and Christine Long. Um, we have a wellness portal, uh, and that tracks our wellness points and provides incentives for keeping up with our health and gives a little friendly internal competition for points. Um, and each month we provide a calendar of wellness events that everyone can participate in. Uh, we have some of our larger programs. We do lunch and learns and that can be both, uh, in person or virtual. Um, we do, uh, annual biometric screening, uh, we do flu shot clinics, health fairs. Uh, this past health fair that we did was actually our biggest health fair and we had, uh, vendors from the, from the area come in as vendors. So that was, that was really great and, and positive. Got really positive feedback from that. And then also giving back to our community, um, and that, that can take the form of, you know, our Thanksgiving food drive, um, or around the holidays, we do something like a toy drive. Um, so that kinda gives you just kind of a really brief overview. I didn't wanna, I know there's some new faces up here, so I wanna familiarize you just a little bit, um, but I didn't wanna get too in-depth about it. Um, but for, now for the designation. So for twenty twenty-three, um, I filled out a survey for our wellness program. Um, for the possibility to receive a healthy workforce designation, uh, from Cigna. Uh, and this evaluates organizations based on core components of their well-being programs, um, including leadership and culture, program foundations and execution, policies and accommodations and other additional areas. Last week, uh, we found out that we received the twenty twenty-three silver level healthy workforce designation from Cigna. Um, there's bronze, silver and gold. So we actually received the silver, uh, which is a huge accomplishment and proud, uh, of our team and the wellness program. And thankful for all our employees who participate in the program. Um, I would like to say a huge thank you to the wellness team, uh, for committing their time and energy to being part of the team. They bring their input and ideas to all the meetings and do a tremendous job of, of executing the wellness initiatives. They helped make this program what it is. It wouldn't be where it is without them. Um, and we're excited to do even more. Just a round of applause for the wellness team.
So next up, I'd like to introduce Travis Hardy, uh, from Strickland Hardy. Uh, you will be making a presentation today on our audit.
So every year after the fiscal year is near the end, we do an audit, a complete audit of the budget and you'll be presenting the results of our latest. Good evening. Um, I'm here, like, uh, the mayor said, just to present a summary of the audit report, um, just to give you some, some information on that. Um, we'll get started right in, jump right into it and first thing here you can see is just kind of the services we provided. Uh, obviously we did an annual audit of the financial statements. We assisted with the preparation of those financial statements based on information that we obtained from the finance department. We, uh, report to management on observations, recommendations that we, we, uh, that we may, uh, see, uh, during the audit. And we consult on any new accounting matters or any, answer any questions that, uh, the finance department may have concerning any new standards or anything like that. Um, and obviously we attend the board meeting to, uh, to give you this summarization. And I need to flip some pages here so I don't get lost. Um, the crux of our audit, we go through a whole lot of testing, but we really only provide one or two major components. And the first thing on that is we issued an opinion on those financial statements. Uh, and as you can see here, we expressed an unmodified opinion on the financial statements as a whole. And that is the best opinion you can receive. We also audited major programs as part of the single audit. And the major programs that we looked at were the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund as well as the Powell bill fund. And we issued an unmodified opinion on the compliance, uh, on those, uh, two programs as well. Again, uh, the best that you can get in a, in a compliance audit. So well done to, uh, the finance department for all they did. Um, keeping everything in order and in check with all the rules and regulations of the state, the federal government. Uh, so congratulations to them. Moving forward, before I get into the graphs, I do want to address one issue that was, uh, that we did find. Um, that deals with budgets of all the funds that are expended, uh, during the year. In FY twenty-two, there were some, I know I'm going back a year, there were some, uh, budgets that were omitted, um, or expenditures exceeded the budget, uh, the approved budget. So that was addressed with the LGC, the Local Government Commission of North Carolina. However, in FY twenty-three, we had basically the same problem with some funds. So let me address those real quick, explain that and then we'll move forward with some more of the, uh, financial information. The transportation alternative program, uh, was over expended based on expenditures compared to the approved budget. By a total of ninety-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars. The downtown park honorarium fund, uh, for the governmental, the general government function was overspent by four thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars. In addition, there was one capital project fund that actually did not have an authorized budget. It was a small project, uh, but it still needed a budget to be in adherence to the law. So all of this basically is in violation of North Carolina General Statute, one fifty-nine dash thirteen and one fifty-nine dash twenty-six, sorry, twenty-eight. Um, let me explain a little bit about what all that means. Uh, basically every fund, every dollar has to be approved by budget amendment, budget authorization. In this case, there were some over expenditures of that budget, not meaning funds were misappropriated. It just means that the budget wasn't amended for any new expenditures that may have occurred during the year. Now, this is, uh, results in a significant deficiency finding. Um, and all that the board or the town has to do is just address this issue with the local government commission and explain to them. What happened and what procedures are gonna be put into place to prevent it from happening again. That in a nutshell is really all that has to happen. So there's not gonna be a fine, not gonna be anything like that. Um, just to, to ease your mind on that. It's just a formality that the town has to go through with the local government commission. Um, so I wanted to address that before we got any further. Um, I'll stop and ask if there's any questions on that before we dive into the rest of it. Okay. Moving on, this is where we get into kind of the numbers of the audit, just so you can kinda see what was going on for the year. Um, this graph here is your governmental funds, fund balance. And governmental funds includes your general fund, all your special, uh, purpose funds and your capital project funds. So this is basically everything condensed into one. Um, and you can see here, your general fund, I do have separated, had an ending fund balance. June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three of a little over thirty-eight million dollars. All your other funds had a fund balance of just over seven million. And you can see a huge jump in the blue bar there, which is your general fund from twenty-two to twenty-three. I'm gonna break that down a little bit further in just a minute, so you can kinda see what makes that up. Alright, this is, um, those same numbers but broken down a little bit into different categories that the reporting model for governments, uh, suggest that we show. Non-spendable, uh, restricted fund balance of twenty-three point nine million. And then you had committed fund balance, assigned fund balance, and then your key one is your unassigned fund balance of twenty-eight point seven million dollars. That is the number that is, in a sense, available to be spent in the subsequent period. It's not been assigned for something, it's not been restricted for a certain expenditure in the subsequent period. Um, it is what is available for the next subsequent, for the subsequent years expenditures.
Would you call that cash on hand?
It is not necessarily cash because it could include some accounts receivables, it could include your investments, um, uh, and some other things, less any of your payables. So if you're on the cash basis, yes it would. On the accrual basis, it includes a few other things. Okay, this is your governmental funds revenues by source. Um, and here, again, this is all of your funds combined. Your ad valorem taxes, uh, for twenty-three was twelve point five million. And in that number is where you'll see your property taxes and your motor vehicle tax funds coming in. Your, your next large one there is your intergovernmental funds, which is ten point six million. And a lot of that money is where you have your local option sales tax funds come in, um, and a few other governmental funds coming from other government sources. Uh, such as North Carolina or federal, if that's the, if you had federal dollars, which you did. Um, and then your other is just really your miscellaneous revenues from, like, your parks and recreations and your other, you know, programs that you have, uh, here in the town. Um, so that's kinda what makes up those two large numbers, uh, on this screen here.
Is the inter-governmental, is that where the sales tax is coming from?
Your inter-governmental is your sales tax, it's part of it, yes sir. Okay, this is your governmental funds expenditures. Um, and you can see right off the bat here that your largest is your capital outlay. Included in that number is a five point two million for the town, uh, the new town campus that was, uh, that was started, I believe, in twenty-three or. And then one point seven million of that came from your, uh, American Recovery Plan. So that's your federal dollars that was used to, on capital outlay expenditures. And then three point seven million was really for your other governmental funds where they had some capital outlet expenses and all of those, uh, different capital projects and some of your special revenue funds as well. Um, and so that's what makes up that big thirteen million dollar capital outlet number.
So it's not all town campus?
No, sir, not all town campus. Alright, now, we just talked about all funds combined into one. Most people really are interested in the general fund, which is your, your, basically your big fund, uh, that houses all of your activity except for those things that are specific, that specifically has to be in another fund. So what we're looking at here is your fund balance for just your general fund. And you can see restricted of seventeen million dollars. That's money that has been restricted for a specific purpose in the subsequent period. Here you can see twenty million or twenty point seven million is unassigned. That is the same number you saw earlier in the governmental, in the governmental funds. And that's because your general fund is the only fund that can have an unassigned fund balance. At the bottom, you can see some percentages there and twenty-three, an oversight on my part and apparently the LGCs. They did not format that number correctly and it should be sixty-three point six two five seven, or nine seven percent. They just misplaced the decimal in their, in their formatting of that number. So it looks really huge compared to the others and is, but it's just a formatting issue. The number itself is correct.
So would you call the restricted funds operating funds as well as capital expenditures or capital allocations that have been committed?
Those are, I'll tell you what, I can give you a better answer to that. Um, there are funds that have a specific purpose, such as anything from your federal grants that have dollars in there. The revenue's been recognized, but that money is restricted for a specific purpose. All your capital outlay programs are s- All your capital outlay programs are restricted for that specific capital outlay project, um, and that can only be spent on that specific project. Uh, so that's really what makes up most of that restricted number. Um, I think I may have that somewhere else as well. But to answer the basic question, it is money that's come down for a specific purpose, it can only be spent on that. So, therefore, the, any fund balance that is, any of those funds that has a fund balance, we show that as a restricted fund balance, so the readers will know that it's not to be spent on just anything. Let's see here. All right. Now, this is just the general funds revenue by source. Again, you can see ad valorem taxes, twelve point five million, uh, and your intergovernmental here is six point seven million. Uh, and just to reiterate, property taxes and motor vehicle taxes is what makes up that ad valorem number. Uh, and included in the intergovernmental, uh, I believe it was five something million, is what makes up that six point seven million intergovernmental number. This is your general fund expenditures by, uh, what we're gonna call your functional expenses being your government, your general government, your public safety, or your departments, uh, maybe a better term there. Um, and so you can see the expenses for each of your departments. Um, and, uh, for the most part, they run pretty much in line with the prior years, about what I would expect with some increasing, uh, due to inflation and things of that nature. Um, but anyway, this will give you some idea by department of, uh, what those expenses are. All right. This chart is your general fund working capital. This is just basically, uh, a percentage, your current assets over your current liabilities. Um, and so you can see in twenty-two, just to give you some comparison, it was twenty-four point five-seven percent. And in twenty-three, it's sixteen point twelve percent. It came down a little bit, but still, that number is significantly large in comparison, uh, to most other municipalities, um, that I deal with. You're, you're basically, you're saying that you have sixteen times the assets that you do liabilities, current asset over current liabilities. So, it's very, very high number. And that, I believe, is actually, yep, that's my last slide, so I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Good evening, I have a quick question. We look at the economic and community development, uh, line item there, what does that include? Types of services?
Your, I'm sorry, your economic and community development?
Yes.
I would actually, I do these based on codes that, oh, actually, Rosie gives me. Um, so she could probably better tell you what's incorporated in that. Um, what I typically do is look at what she tells me, and it's okay, yes, the numbers look good based on just financial data and that type of thing. Um, but as far as, and if you'd asked me this when I was in the heart of this audit, I probably could have answered it, but I have dealt with so many more entities, uh, I would be scared to say it's this and this and this, uh, without actually being sure, but I'm sure Rosie can give that answer.
Sorry, Rosie.
I would expect if you're looking at the economic and community development, you're looking at the services, like, the, um, the, um, business development, which was the downtown program, the, um, Parks and Rec. Yeah, Parks and Rec is in there, of the, what actually, the services that are out and about with the public facing.
And then in line with that would be the environmental protection. Fun there is that, would we... Well, maybe Jeff can answer that.
That's your sanitation waste pro.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, that was it. All right, thank you.
One question I had was the difference between a governmental expenditure and a governmental fund expenditure. Those, those slides seem very similar. Curious, what's the difference in two different slides?
The governmental, okay, let me explain it like this. With, within your financial statements or within your general ledger, the books that I get when we start doing an audit, there are different funds. You got your general fund, you got all your different capital project funds, and then you've got special revenue funds, um, which are your, like, your federal programs, uh, and some of your, uh, your state funds. So, governmental funds are all of those funds combined. That's, that's the whole thing within your financial statements. The general fund is just that one specific general fund. It excludes everything else, you're only looking at that one fund. Um, so that's the difference in the two. Your governmental funds will always be larger, because it includes everything. Your general fund is the one that really is the heart of your town's revenues coming in, uh, that are not assigned or specific to a project. Um, and, and so that's what really your general fund is. Every town, every governmental entity will have a general fund, not necessarily have all those other capital project funds and special revenue funds, depending on the size.
Mayor, I have a question. This is the same question I ask every year, but, uh, just how, how do we, how are we doing compared to our peers?
Okay, I can answer that question. Based on the entities that my firm looks at, um, and based on the ones that I am more involved in, I can tell you that your town is doing well, very well, in comparison to the other entities or other municipalities that, that, um, our firm looks at, you know? So, you're doing very well in budgeting and getting projects done, completed, and still building your fund balance. So, yes, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for anyone? All righty. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Uh, we have two text amendments. The first one will be a public hearing for text amendment TA oh-one-two, twenty-twenty-four, the park land fee and lieu. Any public comments on that one? No, nobody signed up. Oh, yeah, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearings?
All in favor? Uh, public hearing is now open. We had no one sign up for that particular public hearing, so a motion to close that public hearing, or do we go to the next one? Okay. Go ahead, Rosie, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, petition TA one-two, twenty-twenty-four is a request by the Town of Waxaw Planning Department to amend section eight point nine J two in our land development code to clarify the fee and lieu payment, um, and to make sure that adjustment is made to a fair market value. One sixty D eight oh-four is our state statute that allows for exactions or fee and lieu. Um, there are very few, uh, transportation mitigation is one, utilities, um, but this one is specific to providing recreational areas or payment, um, in lieu for those impacts. So, back in twenty-twenty-two, we adopted a code that required one thirty-fifth of an acre, um, to be dedicated to the town for public park purposes per dwelling unit. Or you have the option to take that number of acres and, um, get a fee and lieu based on the tax value. So, staff, um, wanted some more clarity around this. Typically, um, we collect the payment in lieu at the final plat, plat stage, which is one or two, maybe three years after a rezoning or construction plan approval. We want to make sure that fee and lieu payment is adjusted to the fair market value at final plat. So, staff, um, has added the text in bold under number two. It says, "For property tax purposes, the assessed value of the land being subdivided shall be adjusted to reflect its current fair market value at the time such payment is due to be paid." Uh, we brought this to planning board last month, and they unanimously recommended approval, but they also asked that we add further clarity in the underlying statement. Um, it says, "Such values shall consider zoning changes. Tax deferrals of any kind shall not be used in the calculation of the fees." I had, um, sent that additional text to our town attorney, um, to make sure it was okay to move forward, and he did have some concerns, so I will let him speak to those. And, um, I'll come back to that. With every text amendment, we have to do a reasonable inconsistency statement. We'll adopt that at the next meeting when we adopt the ordinance. And I would be happy to answer any questions, and...
I'll step in now, thank you, Lisa. My suggestion was that that was too long, uh, uh, a statement there. Um, number one, the, uh, the exemptions on taxable properties such as age exemption or, um, uh, bona fide farm exemptions, those have to do with what percent the property owner has to pay in taxes, but has nothing to do with evaluation. And, and so I said, "Why don't you just shorten that and just say, 'Based on the fair market value of the property.'" Not two sentences just to say fair market value, because fair market value will be done in a way that would be similar to a, a, a full-fledged appraisal. And the full-fledged appraisal would not take any consideration, uh, consideration of those items, because those items have nothing to do with the value of it. So, I said, "Just say fair market value and leave it there at that." So, that was my recommendation, is to, instead of saying those two sentences, based, just say, "Based on the fair market value of the property at the time of, for that final stage." Yeah, the time of the plat, so that was my only suggestion, just make it simplified.
So, um, with that recommendation, we'll come back at the next meeting. We'll get rid of that second additional sentence, so it'll just be the, the first bold set, uh, sentence, if everyone's okay with that. Any questions?
So, as it stands, then, uh, there's a, a gap of years then between the payment in lieu and when it actually gets paid, and so I guess with recent inflation, this is kind of bubbled up.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah, do we clearly state when the value was assessed?
Um, yes, it's the sentence before, it's the final plat stage, so the land is either dedicated to the town on that final plat, or we would collect the fee and lieu before we sign off on a final plat. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public hearing, we have text amendment TA zero-one-one, twenty-twenty-four. I believe we had Pam Murphy who signed up to make public comment.
Hi, I'm Pam Murphy, I'm a resident of Waxaw, and I just wanted to make a short statement on the, uh, the signage amendment. Um, after hearing that this was gonna be on the agenda, I started doing just some observation in this town and other towns that I've been in in the past week. And I've noticed that downtown areas don't usually have the reverse lit channel letters. That is something that just seems to be more common in plazas and strip malls and, um, even driving in tonight, you know, I noticed it on, on the, you know, where Bistro Antonio is, like, that type of thing. Where you're driving in a car and you're looking really, really far away, so you need that, that lit, you know, that you can see, you know, where, um, what Willie's is or something when you're trying to find it in this huge plaza. But in our downtown area, what we have now is very, a very conservative kind of signage, um, you know, like Alvez or, um, you know, Mary O'Neil's, and I think that is appropriate for our downtown area. So, I am really recommending that when they add the, um, external light to the blade signs, and we, we should do that to the wall signs also, and, and not have the reverse lit channel letters in our downtown area. I just don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
That was all for public comment, so next up, Madison. More formal presentation.
Hi, good afternoon. Or good evening, whichever.
It's afternoon somewhere.
Afternoon somewhere, that's right. Uh, so petition TA zero-one-one, twenty-twenty-four is a request by your planning department in coordination with the town's business development director to amend chapter ten, the attached sign standards, and then also in chapter ten, the internal illumination. So, this is in the land development code. So, this would alter the illumination standards for signage in the main street and town center zoning districts. So, these are the specific zoning districts for our downtown. And so this update will allow greater illumination for new blade signs, but then it will also limit the illumination for new wall signs for downtown businesses. So, a wall sign is a, uh, sign attached directly to the facade of a building or structure, and we give the example of our downtown businesses. And then a blade sign, or we consider more of a pedestrian sign, is a sign attached typically at a right angle for pedestrians to see, uh, the businesses in which they're walking beside of. So, right now, our current sign standards for wall signs in Main Street and Town Center currently allow illumination externally. So, a light that's attached on the outside of the sign, shining towards or facing directly towards the sign face. And then we also allow internal illumination, so that's channel letter, that's reverse lit, that's a push-through, um, so all really types of internal illumination are allowed at this time. And then for our blade or projecting signs, uh, we don't allow any illumination standards for those. So, what we are proposing, um, we're still gonna allow wall signs in other zoning districts to have, uh, external or internal illumination. Uh, and we are still gonna allow external illumination for wall signs in the downtown zoning districts. But when it comes to being internally illuminated, we're restricting that to only reverse lit channel letters only. And then for the blade signs, we're opening that up for external illumination only. Uh, so, and also, our current sign illumination standards, uh, give specific color of white to reverse lit channel letters. And so we are changing that to where if someone is proposing a color other than white, those must be approved by the zoning administrator. So, that gives us the flexibility to see the sign renderings and determine, uh, by us in the planning department if it's suitable for that particular sign. So, what does that look like? So, our current downtown wall sign illumination allows for these types of illumination. So, you get the channel letter, uh, this is kind of what you see in, in a shopping center. Um, this is probably the primary signage that we see through sign permits. I give the example of Dunkin' Donuts and then the Family Dollar located behind Town Hall. And then reverse lit, uh, we currently allow, and then the push-through, which we don't see very often. Um, and then, of course, our current blade signs don't allow any illumination. So, what would our proposed sign standards look like if adopted? And I see these pictures are darker now, but, um, so the top row shows the reverse lit channel letters, or sometimes often referred to as halo illumination. So, the light is, um, attached to the back of a sign and directs the light towards the facade of the building. And, uh, so there are some examples there of, uh, Jekyll and Hyde, and then another example of Donovan's, uh, which is another business. And then for our blades- And then for our blade signs, you can see the external illumination there with the external light shining directly on the face of the sign. So this is not the most recent. So I had originally added the illumination that I showed to the planning board, and those were two additional examples of that. And I apologize that it didn't get in the correct folder. So upon the adoption of the Land Development Code and overseeing its implementation, the planning department proposes these sign illumination updates to provide character, enhance sense of place, and help the downtown businesses be better identified. So planning staff recommends the adoption of this text amendment. And at our January 16th Planning Board meeting, the planning board unanimously recommended approval. And then there's a reasonableness and consistency statement for the next meeting. And then my motion for tonight would just be to close the public hearing. And any questions, comments?
Yes. Hi.
Hi.
Um, so I would say we should restrict it further.
Okay.
And I have the opinion from me and others I've spoken to in town and residents would be to very like, very much like Mrs. Murphy said, to have it be more muted, similar to an Emmett's or Mary O'Neal's, because it is a downtown, it's a historic downtown. And if we're trying to preserve the history of the downtown, then illuminated lights were not around in the 1800s, so.
Sure.
I would say to keep everything uniform as it is, you know, one will be illuminated this way because it was passed prior to changing the text amendment. But I don't see the downtown illuminated like this being something that screams Waxaw. But to me, it seems more like Nashville, Vegas. While it's okay, like on the way, on 16, because people would need to see those signs, I think in downtown with the beautiful quiet lighting, soft lighting, I think that would be more in line with what Waxaw looks like.
Okay, and is that?
Downtown Waxaw.
Yeah, is that specific to the wall signs? Or are you comfortable with the blade signs or the external illumination?
The blade signs, but that external is fine with that little lamp shown. It's really for the wall signs, because I don't, I don't know. I don't know that I want to be walking down and just have light pollution in my eyes.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, when I first saw the examples of the channel lit, it didn't look too bad, but then I saw more examples and it does look kind of Vegas. So my personal preference would be just to have external sign.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, just external versus what this is proposing? Yeah, I could do that. Yeah, sounds good. Anything else? Any more questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Can I get a motion to close public hearings at this time? Motion to close public hearings? All in favor? Public hearings are now closed. There's nothing on the old business, so we will move on to the new business. We have the adoption of the resolution support, Resolution 2024 005, the application of Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant. And we have our presentation on that?
Yes, sir. My name is Janet Pirano. I am a planner here in Waxaw, and I am also the staff liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission. So I'm here tonight to request your support for the Town of Waxaw's application for the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant Program. So a little bit about the grant. It is sponsored by the National Park Service. It is a pass-through grant program with awards ranging from $200,000 to $750,000. The goals are to support sub-grant programs that enable rehabilitation of rural historic properties and to rehabilitate, protect, and foster economic development of rural communities. So the Town of Waxaw is eligible to apply for this because we are a certified local government. Certified local governments are municipalities that have demonstrated a commitment to local preservation and saving the past for future generations. Waxaw was recognized as a CLG in January of 2023. Sub-grantees that are eligible are places that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places, areas identified as rural, which is defined as less than 50,000 population, and that are within the grantees jurisdiction. So anybody within our Waxaw Historic District would be able to apply. Our sub-grant program, we are asking for $550,000 to fund up to 10 projects over three years. Eligible applicants will be commercial property owners or tenants, nonprofit organizations with a community focus, residential property owners who are converting their properties for commercial use. And the types of projects that we would sponsor would be structural rehabilitation, roof repair replacement, interior restorations, and commercial outfits of residential structures. And those photos are just some examples of what could possibly be funded with this grant. The Masonic Lodge needs some exterior and some interior work. The picture on the top right shows the 1970's drop ceiling and laminate flooring. The home on the lower left is one of the homes along Main Street that could be converted into a commercial property. And then the picture on the bottom right, that building is in need of some structural repair. So those are, you know, some options, some people that would be able to apply for a sub-grant. So if we are awarded this, then our responsibilities will be to design and implement a sub-grant program to competitively select projects that meet the program's goals, to monitor the projects during construction, to ensure compliance with the terms and conditions of the grant agreement, and we will be responsible for semi-annual reports to the National Park Service. We have received letters of support from the Downtown Waxaw Association and the Waxaw Historic Preservation Commission. And this evening, I am requesting a motion to approve the resolution endorsing the Town of Waxaw's application for the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant application in the amount of $550,000. Questions?
Any questions? We'll move on to a motion. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2024 005?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution RES 2024 005, endorsing the Town of Waxaw's application for the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant in the amount of $550,000.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is so adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will go into an open discussion about the possible date change for the Board of Commissioners meetings. Comments, suggestions, recommendations? Is there? Oh, there is. Thank you, Barbie.
Good evening. This is going to be an open discussion related to potentially changing the BOC meeting schedule to attract more attorney interest. So this is your references or resources that guide you in your meeting schedules. You have your town charter, which indicates that you meet as you see fit. Rules of procedure, which states that you meet at least once monthly. And then we have an operations protocol manual that indicates that you meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Also, you are provided with the North Carolina General Statute 160A 71 that outlines your authority to make that meeting schedule and to meet at least once a month to conduct town business. It also recommends that you may want to adopt rules of procedure, which that's what you've done already. So this is the advisory boards and the Board of Commissioners and the meeting dates that they all meet within the month. So if you were to change your meeting schedule from Tuesday to choose a Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday, these are some of the challenges that you might be presented with that change. Of course, if you were to change it on a Monday, there are no advisory board meetings, and you hit a holiday, which is a Memorial Day, and that's a town observed holiday. Historically, the Town of Waxaw has geared away from having their meetings on these other days due to some of the scheduling conflicts for the advisory boards. So you have historically met on a Tuesday to avoid those challenges. But if you were to do a Wednesday or Thursday, you do interfere with a PAC meeting, which is the Public Art Committee, and then the Historic Preservation Committee. And the holidays for that is Christmas Day and Thanksgiving. Although you only meet once in December, so that wouldn't be an effect. But if you were to meet on a Thursday, sometimes Thanksgiving falls on a Thursday, so it would be a town observed holiday. So we would have to find an alternative day if you were to choose that. So then I took a look at our peer municipalities and when they meet. Over to the left are the counties and the times that they meet. And over to the right are all the municipalities within our area that meet on a specific day. I went all the way out to Gaston County because of the proximity of Belmont and some of the small towns that we generally look for. And they are also within our, within our region there. So I open the floor for your discussion and consideration.
So one clarification. So it looks like in order to change the day, we'd have to change the operating manual or the operations manual? That's the document that would have to change in order to change the day? As I understood your presentation.
If you change the date, that would have the effect of changing the operational manual.
So changing the date drives the change to the operations manual?
Correct. I'll use an illustration that we will understand. If you have a comprehensive plan, zoning plan, and the board decides that it wants to adopt a use that is not called for in that particular area under the comprehensive plan, but by allowing that use, that automatically means your comprehensive plan to include that use in that area. So you only need to vote on something once, then that has the effect of, the ripple effect of changing the others.
And then on the week of Thanksgiving, do we typically meet the week of Thanksgiving at all?
You do have two meetings in November. December is the only month that you only meet once.
Yes, it just depends on how the calendar falls. Sometimes the fourth Tuesday is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and then other times, it's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
That's all I have. Well, you know, it's been on a Tuesday for quite a long time, right? Twenty years or so?
Correct. Historically, they have met on Tuesday.
So I think it's good to have this out there now just in a preliminary sort of fashion so that people are able to hear this tonight and maybe weigh in on this another day. Because people have been doing something like this for a long time. They might be sensitive about changing it.
We do have, this Friday, we'll see what response we get from the ones that we've reached out to. And don't know what that response will be yet. From early indications, and you know, you don't know until they actually turn them in. But I've gotten three that said that they intend to, and one that said they may. And you won't know, though, until they actually submit something. I mean, in our experience with general contractors, all the time, they say they will submit something and then they don't. So I don't know if attorneys are the same way, but it's, hopefully they will.
If we consider a Monday or another day, in any case, it could open up more options. So that might broaden the field in the future, and we can look at that. I wouldn't want to be limited in a decision based on a date, if it could be changed, without causing too much hullabaloo. And Monday, if it seems like a day that we're not conflicting with another advisory board, and there's a holiday there, like other places, perhaps we can make changes along the way. It's just up for discussion at this point, but it's a consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't going to say a whole lot here, but one thing you could do would be to expand the population, would be simply to post on the legs. I mean, you have it gone outside of the area to see if there is someone who would be interested. The mistake that was made last time was you sought someone that was going to want a full time. You don't need, I don't understand where I'm going. You may want to post for an hourly like me. That's all I wanted to say. You could open up the population.
I don't know if it's a good idea to have a town attorney. It was something I would personally put on the agenda for the purpose of feeling it out.
For the purpose of getting it out, I would tell you.
For the purpose of broadening the pool in which town attorneys might be available.
Based on the applications that we have.
Based on some of the feedback we've seen so far and the foreseeable feedback that we can get from potential applicants.
And that was about, as our town attorney said, most of the information. Now, it's not necessarily hard, but it would be difficult to try.
I have reached out to the county municipalities, and this was just a question that I wanted to present to the board in preparation for responses from the county municipalities in case it was sounding, no one's available on Tuesday. So just sort of greasing the skids, if in the event of a change, is deemed necessary to accommodate a potential.
That's true.
I was just gonna say, there's no forethought in, yes, I'm gonna change the meeting, or yeah, we need to change the meeting. This is just trying to open it up. That's all. That's all.
So my name is Nancy. With regard to the immediate change, I trust that we have some thoughts. One is the central, as you said, application. This allows board members to send the essentials to the board for the upcoming meeting. Although the board of commissioners has the right to change the initial meetings through this current process. In addition, as we invite our town boards, which is the African and the Palatists, also some rest of our regular schedules, which now could possibly be a threat with us changing the date. What is the status of these concerns? Is my impact is now a change in our meeting? Is stated that we need changes to allow the power of attorney consideration to? It stated that the change is to allow the partner or attorney consideration to be applied for the petition. However, when I reviewed the online correspondence and the training methods between board members, it appears that there was an interest in one particular person and that person's availability. So I did not see that the asked for the possibility of a possible candidate's signature. This information that has now been made public with any other potential candidates could give the appearance that in fact the board, which was the asset for additional information and possible meaning of this, the candidates is in fact interested in this particular person. But in fact, that does not exist and the desire for is being the vote of majority. The source of all public information is captured on the address, the addresses, the statements, the written correspondence. By a reference, they may be sent public under a piramid of public record. That may be exposed to third parties, those third parties who in fact be potential candidates for the attorney position. The emails that were ready for are electronically formed of the open meeting. The emails were sent to the mayor and the BOC whenever I'm having the capability to partake all in the discussion. There was no notice of absolutely. In addition, the review of the plea that they had is not only a violation of open meeting with the law, the information between their people, but it's also a violation of what transpired in closed session. With regard to personal matters, it can only be discussed in a legally called closed session. A legally called closed session can only be called in open session by proper motion and by majority vote with affirmative. This did not occur. This unofficial open meeting did. The question of fact there is now to be what actually only discuss was meeting. Change isn't to attract additional candidates or to accommodate one particular candidate. As I attempt to take this step further, I should in fact have contacted all the other municipalities with regard to this matter and for disposition. The information that I received and will possibly receive additional information will be forward reporting to the town, the town manager, and then follow the proper protocol, which is the Board of Commissioners for consideration in the proper meeting format. There have been violations announced about this, how we do have to occur closed session.
Madam Pro Tem, I must interrupt you as as your attorney, that there is a thing called emissions against interest, and you should not be making any references that there have been violations.
There has been
Well, I think we need to stay away from things that could get the town in a position where the town is responsible for some activities that the town doesn't need to be involved with. Well, I haven't heard that the court cases said there has been a violation, so let's not say that there's been a violation. Let's just say that there's no re- no way to discuss this without going into closed session with your attorney to discuss this issue. This should not be a public comment session at this point. It's gone beyond, it's gone beyond just questions about the situation, but but to acknowledge that there may have been a violation is is something that works against the town of Waxahachie, which I must impose we need to be quiet and be careful with that.
I'd like to make a comment. We sit here and we're being reprimanded about skirting open meeting laws, and we're having two-by-twos, which give the appearance that we're skirting open meeting laws. And so I'm gonna leave it at that. And so
No, that's not skirting either.
I'm not saying we did or didn't.
No, I'm just saying that it did. Well, appearance, though, is not a violation, and then if it's if it is not a violation, then it's not skirting anything.
But my point would be that if we were going to be brought up and and someone was going to say we're skirting it, I think a case could be made that we're having three separate meetings rather than a work session.
Those meetings, though, are not in violation of the open meetings law or the closed meeting law.
As Per Charlie's advice, I'm not gonna go into any detail, but you're being very selective with your discussion of emails that violate.
Mayor, I have a suggestion that we just wait and see what we get on Friday?
Yeah, again, as I stated earlier, this was the intent of this was to roach the subject to see how hard it would be, to see what procedures would have to be followed if a change was needed. But again, this was a response out of sending out five feelers and getting two negatives as a result of the day. So if we're losing part of our hiring pool because of the day, perhaps changing the day opens up that pool a little bit so folks can find an attorney they really, really like and they're gonna work with. So there's no, there's no premeditation in terms of changing the day or any intent to change it for a particular purpose.
Jeff, I'm sorry, one last question. How many people responded? How many people did we reach out to? How many people responded? And how many peo- how many attorneys are in this county that we could reach out to?
Let me say this, we're we're dealing with items that are subject to a closed meeting, and I think we need to not have any discussions whatsoever on the appointment of a new attorney.
You know, if you're concerned about the appearance of the board favoring one attorney, I think you just made it clear that the board does not favor one attorney. So you just addressed the problem right there. Okay, I think we'll move on to the next topic at this point.
Well, actually, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we leave the town meetings the way they are on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. So a motion is on the floor.
Can I get a motion to leave it on the second and third, or second and fourth Tuesday of the month? Oh, that was, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Need to call all opposed, Mayor.
All opposed. The ayes appear to have it. Therefore, the meetings will remain on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Okay, next topic. I think at this point, we're doing our leadership reports. Leadership reports.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Union County Board of Elections is starting to move into the rec barn. You may have noticed today, the sign went up for early voting. That begins on Thursday, February fifteenth, and it will go through March second, which I believe is a Saturday. I think they get started at eight, eight AM there, so we, uh, we made our our deadline there, got them equipped up with Wi-Fi and ready to go there in their secured space so that people have an opportunity to early vote closer closer in here. So, uh, and as I reminded you at the beginning of the meeting, just remind you again to, uh, don't leave too quick after the meeting. Dina and I need to make sure that you, uh, we've got your names correctly on plaques that we have to to order for some of our projects. And we also need to get your signature on a document that we send to the LGC after you've heard Mr. Auditor this evening. Staff has established a link to public hearing notices that will be published on the town website when the town clerk produces them. The latest one will be featured on the page with previous notices sequentially stored for viewing on the same page. When the clerk sends the public notice to the newspaper, she'll also have it posted on social media. So, uh, Nick, I think, uh, Nick is gonna show us where it lives on the website now. Nick, if you just, yep, scroll down a little bit in the latest public notice you see there. And, uh, we'll we'll keep it on there as Barbie sends it to the, um, to the newspaper, just so nothing's lost in translation if, uh, if, uh, Tamiya has to retype it, per se. And then if you scroll down a little bit more, Nick, see our accordion, we call it there, under Legal Ads. So once a new one, the latest one gets posted, then the, uh, the older one will get housed down there. And they'll just be stored sequentially for how they they come in. And so, Nick, if you scroll back up and put the mouse, the cursor over Government, so if you're on the homepage and you go put your cursor over Government and go over to Public Hearings, that's where you'll be able to find that. And so when, uh, when by state law, we're required to send these things off at certain time periods. And so when Barbie sends that to to the media, that's when we'll post it online. Some public hearings, like text amendments, that they only require notice in media. Other public hearings require you to post on property and send out notices and all that stuff and continue to do. That's what we're required to do by by state law. And lastly, the full audit report in all of its glory will be placed on the the town website. So what you what you received tonight, the agenda was the executive summary. There's about a hundred more pages of spreadsheets. If you'd like to do that, then of course that'll be available for the public to view as well.
Outstanding, that, Mayor.
Yes, if you wanna fall asleep very quickly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ashley, I believe you're next.
Hi, so I'm Ashley Knoll. I'm the Business Development Director for the town of Waxahachie. Last time I was up here, I talked about accreditation. And so our accreditation was submitted last Tuesday on February sixth, so we are done. We should hear a report back from our state group within the next month or so. We are gearing up for the NC State Main Street Conference. That's March twelfth through fourteenth in Goldsboro. This is a chance for us as well of our, as well as our Main Street volunteers to go to a conference and just meet and greet with all of our other Main Street communities across the state, go to sessions and and learn a lot. So we're really excited about that. During conference, they do have a couple of award ceremonies. So we will be recognized with an award for the Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project that happened downtown last year. That award ceremony is in the evening on March thirteenth. And then we will also recognize our Waxahachie Downtown Champions for last year. Those ceremonies will be during the conference, so it's, um, we can't put out a news release quite yet, but once, um, those ceremonies happen, we'll have a news release that goes out that week announcing our award winners. I also wanted to recognize some new businesses that we have in downtown Waxahachie as well as some business expansions. So Nicole Molinelli, who owns eighty-eight A Boutique, she's been sharing a spot with Welty's Antiques for a while. And she has gotten to expand her business into the rest of the space. So Welty's did clothes, but she's gotten to expand her business. And if you haven't gone in there, she has done such an incredible job of decorating and merchandising all her stuff, so it's a really good add to downtown. We're also getting a new Waxahachie General Store in Sassy and Classy. So they're working on their renovations now and should be open in early March. We're looking at a ribbon cutting sometime mid to late March, so I'll let you guys know as soon as we get that date on the calendar. And then lastly, we have Elizabeth Rossi opening up Reclaim Health. This is in the former Susie Lou space across from Millview or across from Emmett in the Millview shops. So a lot of exciting movement downtown right now. Our Waxahachie Business Association has their next meeting next Wednesday, February twentieth. We meet at seven thirty AM at Dream Chasers in downtown. We'll actually have Mayor Murray and Town Manager Jeff Wells with us next week, giving some updates on town projects. So if there are any downtown businesses or Waxahachie businesses that are listening, I'd love to invite you to that. It's a really good chance to just get to know other business owners in the community. And then it's also a really good way to get updates on what's happening in the town. So if you guys know any business owners, too, feel free to invite them to those events. And then lastly, I wanted to touch on a Historic Preservation Workshop that we are doing in partnership with the Historic Preservation Commission. That workshop will be on March twentieth at ten thirty AM at the Waxahachie Women's Club. We do these events each year. We bring in Brett Strum, who is our rep from the State Historic Preservation Office. And he comes in and does a really great presentation on all different kinds of topics. This time, we're gonna be talking about bricks, so how to repair and replace historic brick so that it still functions the way that old brick should. So, and this is a really cool partnership that the DWA does in partnership with the Historic Preservation Commission. So we'll send out invites out for that as well. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Next up, Dina.
Good evening. Um, so I'm gonna give an update on some of our programs. As you know, our program guide can be found on our website. And it has a pack full of awesome things, as such as senior coffee every Thurs- first Thursday and third Thursday, Zumba on Thursdays, ex- inclusive adult programming with Zumba, yoga, and edible art. So we are expanding our offerings for programming, which is really cool for our citizens. We also have partnerships with the Art Box, Miss Kristen with pottery coming up, and with Queen South with mixology, which is always a fun time. Some update with Hero, tomorrow is Hero and it's Valentine's Day, Day of Love. That is going to be at the Harrison Park Playground. So that's another partnership we do with some of our HOAs, which is awesome. And we do appreciate them letting us come and play with them tomorrow, and that is at three. Some updates on events. As we are getting closer to opening a lot of our parks and facilities, we will have a delay in our downtown park opening. Unfortunately, we've had some construction concerns that came up recently that we will have to delay our ribbon cutting on March first. I will be meeting with our contractors this week, and I will give an updated date to you as soon as possible. So all of our TV LAN participants, please look for social media coming soon. And definitely give the BOC and staff an update as soon as I am available to. The Rec Barn ribbon cutting is still scheduled for March eighth, that's a Friday afternoon, from three to six. Those invites went out as well. And movie night will follow right at six, and we will be watching Angels in the Outfield. Very fitting for the environment. Do you have any questions? That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And open it up to the Board of Commissioners. Comments? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? So adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.